Commissioner of the City of Westminster, it's a order. Today's date is July 3rd, 2024, and the time is 6:35. Secretary, if you could take a roll?
Thank you, Chair. Commissioner Bowie?
Yes.
Commissioner Power?
Here.
Chair Wolpert?
I'm here.
Chair, you have a quorum present with the absence of Vice Chair Anderson and Commissioner Hamad.
All right, now's the time we'd like to salute the flag, and if you wouldn't mind standing, Commissioner Power, will you please leave that?
Please place your right hand in your heart, ready to get.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated. All right, item number three tonight, a report from Planning Secretary on any late communication items.
Yes, we received one late communication, and a copy of the comment is provided before you on the dais.
Thank you so much. Item number four, ex parte communication, and this section is intended to allow all officials the opportunity to reveal any disclosures regarding the site visits or ex parte communications about the public hearing and regular business items. Do we have any ex parte communications?
I drove by the site previously.
I also visited the site in section 8.1 of tonight's agenda.
I did draw by the site and observe the whole site.
All right, we'll move on to item number five, any special presentations. Don't think we have any unless there was something last minute. Agenda item number six, oral communications. Clerk, if you wouldn't mind reading the procedure into record for oral communications.
This is a time of the meeting that members of the public may address the Planning Commission on matters of public interest which pertain to the city and are within the subject-matter jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. Members of the public wishing to address public hearing items shall do so at the time of the public hearing. Unless extended by a majority vote of the Planning Commission, comments shall be limited to three minutes per speaker. To address the Planning Commission, please complete a blue request-to-speak form that is provided at the entrance to the council chambers and submit the form to the Planning Commission clerk. When your name is called, please step to the podium at that time and state your name and city of residence for the record.
Do we have any public speakers tonight?
Chair, we do not have any speakers for oral communications.
All right, at that time, I would like to go ahead and close oral communications and move on to the next item. Item number seven is approval of minutes from June 19th, 2024.
I'll move we approve.
I would like to make the amendment or addition from one item that was missing in that last minute.
I'll withdraw the motion.
All right. Yes, in the minutes of meeting last week, two weeks ago, and I think that some people who prepared, they were missing the item that Commissioner Bowie has bring up to the both owners of the properties. Please add in the line, Commissioner Bowie suggests the owners of two business entities can request a city for permit to install under four feet fence to separate the parking lot and prevent overflow parking to either sides of the business. Please have it in, and look at the video recording and put that in before I make the motion decided.
I'll move to approve with that amendment.
A second.
Thank you.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Power and a second by myself. Clerk, can you call a roll on that one?
I'll go ahead and call a roll. That was a motion made by Commissioner Power and seconded by Chair Wolpert, and that's to approve the minutes of June 19th, 2024 with the addition of the recommended text as Commissioner Bowie stated. Commissioner Bowie?
Yes.
Commissioner Power?
Yes.
And Chair Wolpert?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, we will move on to item number eight, which is public hearings on our agenda items. Clerk, if you wouldn't mind read that, procedure into record one more time for public hearing.
Commissioner, we did have an error on the posted agenda that the allotted time to speak is five minutes, but I would like to make the correction that the time is actually three minutes. Anyone wishing to speak on an open public hearing should complete a blue request-to-speak form that is provided at the entrance of the council chambers and submit the form to the Planning Commission clerk. When your name is called, please step to the podium and state your name and city of residence for the record. Each attendee will have three minutes to comment on each public hearing item. The applicant or their designee will have 12 minutes to speak and will also be provided a three-minute rebuttal with exception of the applicant or designee. All attendees may only speak once. The Planning Commission may use its discretion to allow a speaker to exceed the allotted time or may ask a speaker to return to answer additional questions.
Fabulous. So we'll start with agenda item 8.1, case number 2023-0818, and I'd like to turn it over to City Staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and members of the Commission. This item will be presented by our associate planner Cindy Kim with the support of Debbie Dresser, our contract planner.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. Tonight's presentation involves a planning case number 2023-0818, proposed for 25 for-sale condominiums by Brandywine Acquisition Group on property located at formerly known as 13552 Golden West Street with accessories parcel numbers 096-041-03 and, oh, I'm sorry, 30 and 31. The project site is located on the northeast corner of Golden West Street and Fenway Drive. The nearest major cross streets are Golden West and Trask. The project site is currently owned by St. Luke's Lutheran Church of Westminster, and Brandywine is in the process of purchasing the subject vacant property that was originally a part of the church use. Currently, project site is vacant except for grassy playground area and asphalt parking lot that was associated with the church. In April of 2024, the Planning Commission approved case number 2023-0804 to legalize existing church just located on the south of the parcel, and a lot line adjustment was approved to subdivide the church. As you can see, the red line that goes through the existing church property. And a lot line was recorded with the County of Orange creating the 1.29 acre project site. The proposed land use approval includes a development review for the development of 25 for-sale dwelling units, vested tentative tract map for condominium subdivision purposes, and affordable density bonus to accommodate the development of very low income for sale under the state density bonus law. The project includes 11% very low-income affordable units with a density bonus of The project site is Zone R2 with a general plan designation of residential medium. The project site abus multi-residential uses, which is duplex uses to the east, single-family to the west, and religious place of worship to the north and south. The project proposes six buildings comprised of total of 25 condominium units and three plan types. The three plan types with varied floor plans range from 1,200 square feet to 1,775 square feet in size. All plan type provides two-car garages. Plan type two and three are two stories at 35 feet in height, while all plan types complies with the maximum building height of 35 feet. Plan type one exceeds allowable maximum story of two. On the site plan, you can see the dog park is located between the buildings one and two. The community open space area with an outdoor barbecue with tables and covered trailerless bike rack and trash receptacles are located between buildings five and six. The proposed plan includes a 25-foot wide, feet-wide private street accessible from Golden West Street featuring a hamburger head at the eastern end of the of the project to provide access to the aid of the units and to facilitate emergency turnaround. Enhanced paving will be installed at the main entrance along Golden West Street for added aesthetics. The site design includes a reduction in the required minimum 20-foot front setback to 8.6 feet, side yard from seven feet to 4.5 feet, the rear yard from 30 feet to 10 feet. More details will be provided in the next couple of slides. The project also includes 10,140 square feet of landscaping and 517 square feet of decorative hardscape, which is approximately 19% of the total project area, whereas the city requires 15% of the total project area to be landscaped. The proposed project includes a six-foot-tall perimeter block wall along the northeast and south portion of their property with a six-foot-six-inches ply lasters at the end of the perimeter wall closest to the Golden West Street. Two-two-foot-six-inch-tall block walls are proposed within the front setback within the three-foot-tall pilasters positioned north and south of the entry driveways. The proposed building has no distinctive architectural style. Its modern building articulation is achieved through varying roof planes, building facade, offsets, and shutters, and painted trends. For buildings one, three, four, and six, the top of the roof is 30 feet. The buildings two and five, the top of the roof for the in-unit is 35 feet in height. The exterior finish will consist of stucco, vinyl windows, painted garage doors, front doors and shutters, and concrete estile roof material. The color palettes include primary tan stucco with dark browns, greens, and terracolor This is an elevation depicting the rear of the buildings. The proposed project is subject to state density bonus law, which was enacted in 1979 and amended several times since. The intent of the law is to incentivize developers to, in exchange for building affordable units. This is achieved through, I'm sorry. This is achieved by requiring jurisdictions to allow more residential units than the site land use designation permits, and by offering certain development concessions and waivers for income-restricted house projects. Other benefits of the of the density bonus law includes incentive intent to help make development for affordable housing economically feasible. This could include increase in building height requirements as well as waivers or reductions of the development standards, including reduced parking ratio. As proposed, the project includes 11% very low-income units, and therefore, the project is entitled to 35% density bonus based on the formula of the density bonus law. The general plan land use designation allows up to 14 units per acre. Based on 1.9 acre site, the project can accommodate base density of 18 units for the project site, and 35% density bonus yields additional seven units. In total, the applicant is allowed a total of 25 units. 11% affordable units equals to two income-restricted units are designated as Plan One and located in buildings two and five. In compliance with the state law, the applicant is required into, is required to enter into an affordable housing ownership agreement with the city, and both the applicant to ensure that two affordable for-sale units are initially sold to and occupied by persons or family of low, very low income, however, if not sold within 180 days after the certification of occupancy. The unit may be purchased by qualified unnonprofit housing corporation that meets specific In addition, the entitled density increase at the request of an applicant, a jurisdiction is required to provide one or more incentives or concessions through reduction in site development standards or a modification of zoning code or architectural design requirement, which results in identifiable and actual cost reduction. The number of required incentives or concession is based on the percentage of affordable units in the project, and can range from one to four incentive or concessions granted. As proposed, the project is entitled to one incentive or concessions. The applicant seeks to exceed the allowable number of stories from two stories at 35 feet to three stories at 35 feet for the four proposed Plan Type One units. Now, this is a table that lists all the waivers and reductions of the development standards. At the request of an applicant, the city is required to provide waivers or reductions, as indicated previously, and as stated by the state law, city is not permitted to apply any development standards that would physically preclude the construction of the project at its permitted density with the granted concessions and incentives. It is important to note that waivers and reductions of development standards do not count as incentives or concessions. There is no limit on the number of development standard waivers that may request or granted. Accordingly, the applicant is requesting eight development waivers, which includes the reduced front setback, site yard setback, rear yard setback, distance between the buildings, the monument sign setback, and open, open space per unit. The project site is eligible to receive assistance in form of reduced parking ratios when any residential projects include at least, at least 5% units, 5% affordable units per state law. Because the project provides 11% affordable units, the city cannot require a vehicle parking ratio inclusive of parking for persons with disabilities and guests of a development that exceeds the ratio as shown. Based on the state's parking, the maximum of 52 parking spaces is required, whereas the project exceeds the state's requirement by providing a total of six parking spaces, 64, I'm sorry, 64 parking spaces, which consists of 50 allocated garage spaces, nine on driveways, and five off-street parking spaces for guests. The proposed project has been reviewed pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act, known as SEQA, and the requirement of the city has been deemed exempt from further SEQA analysis under categorical exemption, Class 32, Section 1, 5, 3, 3, 2. further SEQA analysis under categorical exemption Class 32, Section 15332 for infield development projects. The exception lists under Section 15300.2 do not apply as discussed further in the categorical exemption report includes as attachment four of the staff report. The project site itself is less than five acres and has no value as a habitat for endangered, rare, or threatened species. Further, the proposed development of the condominium will not result in any significant effect related to traffic, noise, air quality, or water quality, and can be adequately served by all required utilities and public services. Project analysis. Multi-unit residential development is permitted in accordance with the zoning code. With the density bonus and requested concessions and waivers, the project is consistent with relevant development standards contained in the city's code. The project does not exceed the maximum height of thirty-five feet and propose a total of sixty-four parking spaces, which exceeds the required sixty-one city required parking The proposed development provides diversity of housing opportunities that meet the city's current and projected housing needs as identified in the city's housing element. We staff received one late communication and a copy has been provided to all the commissioners in front of you. Some of the issues raised concerns the reduced rear setback or the distance between the new development and the existing uses, parking, building height, and shared perimeter wall between the project site and existing residential properties. The proposed housing development project is in compliance with the objective standards of the general plan and zoning ordinance. Therefore, staff recommends that the planning commission recommend to the mayor and city council for an approval of planning case number 2023-0818. This concludes my presentation, and I can answer any questions. However, the applicant and their development team is in the audience and you could ask specific development questions to the applicant as well.
Thank you very much. And what I'd like to do tonight is actually bring up the applicant to go ahead and speak next, and then we'll open up for questions for staff and the applicant after that. Sound good?
Yes.
Great. So if we could bring up the applicant, that would be fantastic.
Good evening, Chair Walbert and members of the Planning Commission. My name is Rick Wood. I'm with Brandywine Homes, and we are pleased to present our project to you this evening, and we thank staff for all of their assistance in getting us to tonight's hearing. And I'll go through a quick slideshow and then afterwards answer any questions you may have. So Brandywine Homes is this year celebrating our thirty-year anniversary, and during that thirty years, we have developed many projects in Southern California and namely several projects in Orange County. And we are currently building projects in other parts of Southern California, in El Monte and in other parts of Orange County. We have a couple of projects that are up on the board. One is, we just finished in Artesia and another one in Laverne. This is just another slide of the project area. This is a perspective from Golden West Street looking into the project at the project entry. This is the site plan which shows the plotting of the six buildings along with the landscaped And as staff has presented, it's twenty-five for-sale condominiums, and we have adequate parking. They're two, three, and four-bedroom. All units have two-car garages, and each unit has a private patio area. And we've accommodated the residents with some open space amenities for their future use. And we are proposing two very low affordable units. In all, we will be paying about three-hundred-thousand dollars in development fees, and this project assists the city with their future housing needs. That's all we have. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
I have questions. May I, Mr. Chair?
Absolutely. Go ahead.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Would like to ask you, your company is the LLC. That means limited liability corporation, right?
Yes.
Yes. And the owner of the lot, plot of land is, belongs to who?
I'm sorry, the owner of the church currently?
Yes, the church.
Yeah, we have not purchased the property yet.
You have not purchased property yet. So the church is a nonprofit corporation, is that true?
Yes.
It is operate under 501(c)(3)(A), that mean religious corporation. So how can you merge between the LLC and a nonprofit corporation when the nonprofit corporation has to follow the rules and regulation of IRS and Secretary State of California? Have you followed the corporate formality yet before you purchased the plot of land?
Well, as staff mentioned earlier, there was a lot line adjustment bifurcating the site into two separate parcels. So we're only purchasing one of the two newly created parcels, so the church will no longer have ownership of the portion that we purchase, and they will retain ownership of their parcel.
So in that case, that mean the plot of land has been changed to non-for-profit corporation?
A portion of it, yes.
Okay. So I would like to bring that up to the Board Director of the church so that they can clarify to us the formality for corporation before we can proceed that, the decision tonight to me. Yes, that is what I want to clarify because something is need to be follow the rules and regulation of not only IRS but also of the Secretary State of California regarding to the nonprofit corporation property.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, the property is currently in escrow? The parcel is in escrow?
Correct.
And it just hasn't closed yet?
Correct.
Okay. So the church sold off the property that's in question tonight, according to the lot line adjustment that has been recorded with the county, correct? So the new owner would be Brandywine. So they'll be the new owner of the property.
Okay.
But it has not closed escrow yet.
All right. I would like to see the whole procedure so that we can see the corporate, corporation formality is follow, adhere to for other nonprofit corporation.
One minute.
Chair, members of the commission, Alex Hernandez. I'm president of Brandywine Homes. There's representatives here of the church. As stated, we do not own the property. We merely have an option to purchase. Should you approve, should city council approve, then we would close escrow and purchase the property. Right now, we have, we're in escrow under Brandywine Acquisitions, which is an LLC. We would form a project LLC at the time of closing. That's where the financing, banking, and all that would be in there. We are required to, you know, declare that, have a business identification, all that would be private and taxed separately. Churches, as you know, are exempt. They would maintain retention of the property they have to the south. The church is here and they can discuss their portion of that, but I can assure you, we will be complying. We have to run this through the title companies, their lawyers, everyone's checking all that for compliance. And I think tonight, we're just talking about land use and the tentative map which is in front of you, the other agencies will be dealing with their areas. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I do not agree with the proposal that he said that if the city approved, then the purchase will be proceed from that. I think that we should go the other way. That mean you have to follow the corporation procedure and approve everything and before you bring the project to the city for approval.
This is no different than most of our land purchases, regardless of the current entity who is the ownership entity. We purchase post-entitlement, and a new LLC that we form purchases the property. And again, as Alex just stated, everything has to go through legal review and title review, so we've never experienced any issues with.
I think the way you work is between the entities, individual with the, another individual or partnership. In this case, it's involved with public property. That mean it has to be clarified in front of the public, especially to IRS, to Secretary State of California, and to the people who has jurisdiction to the land and approval before it has to go through the next step.
Do we have additional questions for the applicant at this point? I think we understand what you're saying. Perhaps we can move on to questions? Are there any other questions?
I had a very simple question. Have you had any other projects in the city of Westminster?
Yes.
And do you mind just sharing where those are?
Excuse me, I'm new at Brandywine.
Oh, no, no worries.
Actually, if the staff had the aerial of the community up, the proposed just to the north on Trask, you take a right and that, there's like, I think about thirty homes that we built there, that was Brandywine.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have one simple one, and it probably doesn't have to do with planning jurisdiction, but is there a plan for an HOA for this property?
Yes.
And one other question, the nine driveway slots, are those going to be for owner only? So Unit 1, their driveway counts as one of their driving spaces, it's not community property?
Correct.
Okay.
Have another question about regarding the traffic flow. I've been there and then I saw the flow of traffic on Golden West is really heavy on both sides. So did you have a traffic flow investigation and how to solve the problems when we have a lot of residents in that area? Especially, I come there, I saw many apartments around that area, which create a big, big flow traffic jam.
Yeah, all projects are required to do a traffic study, so staff may be able to comment a little bit more than I can on the actual investigation that was done on this particular
Any comments on traffic study that was done?
We have a traffic engineer in the audience, he's going to come up and try to answer those questions.
Okay.
Morning, commissioners. So based on the studies that we have, the developments does not require additional parking or this will not affect the traffic of the area. Because we have that, the trip generation from the area, from the developments, does not meet the threshold and therefore is will not, we will not necessarily to make any accommodation to make a change, any changes.
I think it was an estimated fifty, fifty exits during prime traffic hours? Is that correct?
Give me one second here. So from the study, that the project is likely to add seven fifty or more daily trips and fifty peak hours during the peak hour, but that does not meet the threshold that require to make any adjustment. So based on that, the trip generation by the developments, we don't, we do not need to make any adjustment. May I answer the questions?
Any other questions about traffic?
No.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant or city staff?
No.
All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to bring up any other additional speakers.
Sure. We do have speaker cards. The first three are part of the development team. I'm Rick Wood, Alex Hernandez with Brandywine Homes, and as well as Taylor Ashton as the developer. So any of you would like to speak? No? Okay. Next speaker is Jeff Grubb.
It didn't come with an agenda, I just wanted to be available if anybody needed questions answered from the church's side.
Last speaker is Melissa Cordy.
If I may, Chair Bowie had some questions, and I think maybe if you could come to the front, maybe I could assist. I think his concerns that the church owns the property to the south or will, assuming this transaction is complete, and you'll use the proceeds for church purposes?
Yes, sir. We are, as you all know, that we've, we used to have a property this big and now this chunk of it that was used for playground and when we had schools there in the seventies and eighties, but things changed and now we don't have schools. So they're going to build on that site. We will maintain the rest of the property and we're going to be building a big parking lot improvement to all be up to code and stuff like that. Proceeds that we get from the sale of that property will be going basically into the improvement of the church property, which those of you who have driven by know that we need that. The other thing is, is I did sit in a meeting, just additional information, with the attorney, tax attorney, who led the Catholic Diocese's purchase of what used to be the Crystal Cathedral and all of that. And he's, you know, walked me through conceptually with how a church sells property and it's nothing new or strange, and we'll be making use of his advice throughout the transaction. I have nothing else to say.
I think, does that result?
May I have some question too?
Let's hold the questions until we get through all the public speakers. Because we didn't start the clock on him, so.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, last speaker is Melissa Cordy.
Good evening. My name is Melissa Cordy. I live in Westminster. We actually own one of the duplexes that backs up to this property, and my husband and I have raised our family. We've lived in that duplex for thirty years, over thirty years, and it's home. And so the building of this property, well, it really will be an improvement frankly to that property that backs up to our, the rental side that we have. We do have a few concerns. I've been talking with, I believe, Stephen Edwards, who, from Brandywine, who's been really great, he's been very helpful, and I appreciate his willingness to share with me and everything, but because we live there, a little bit of our struggles, one is this offset. You know, we have a single story. We enjoy being able to sit in our backyard, to enjoy a sunset, to feel a little bit of a breeze, and we're now going to have, you know, thirty or thirty-five buildings behind that house. And we understand, progress happens, we aren't opposed, but I definitely would appreciate consideration for those of us who, this is our home. This isn't just, you know, rental properties that people are in and out of. Several of the people who live on that street, we've known for years that have lived there. And so, you know, I appreciate the fact that they've gone above with the parking. I will say parking there is a nightmare on the stra- I will say parking there is a nightmare on the street. We're fortunate, we have a driveway, but those poor apartments at the ends, I know they fight for parking. And so there is a little bit of consideration there as well for any overflow guests or anything like that from these condos, that it's going to make it worse. And so, yeah, I think those are our biggest concerns. You know, we're going to have people now looking down into our yard and into our home. And so these are things that we just appreciate the council taking into consideration as they make these concessions, as far as offset and height and things like that, that, you know, there are those of us who live there and that would like to continue enjoying the lifestyle we've had. You know, simple home, simple lifestyle, but it's what we love. And so we just appreciate the consideration on those things for those of us who do live there, as you look at making these decisions for some of those concessions. Thank you.
Chair Walbert, we have no further speakers.
All right. Tony, did you want to bring up the church again?
Yes, I would like to bring up the member of church, so that I would like to have some questions regarding the church operation. Please help me with that. As you know, we are Planning Commissioner, we are not only approve the plan, but also see everything from different aspect, and even especially legal legality of the plan. So the first thing I would like to know is, is this a nonprofit corporation? And when was it incorporated?
This is a corporation called St. Luke's Lutheran Church of Westminster, established in November of 1958.
Oh, I see.
It is a 503(c), thank you, 501(c)(3). It is, so we take offerings and spend them on stuff.
Actually, it is called 501(c)(3), and then parentheses a, a especially for religious.
So, just real quick, Tony, we've already established that the church is not part of this, part of this conversation tonight. So can we keep the questions relevant to Agenda Item 8.1?
Right.
Yes. And when I.
Commissioner Bowie? Talk. So I think what he's getting at is, when you make your decision of whether to approve this, you want to make sure that the facts relate to the findings that you need to make. So the findings are in the resolution? So if the questions that you're asking are relevant to whether you can make the findings, is the project consistent with the general plan, for example, then certainly that, those sorts of questions would be valuable.
My question is related to the legality of the church when they have the right to sell the property to other entity. And I would like to see the, propose to see the, everything you follow corporate formality. Okay, please, present to us. I will, I can approve this, however, with the condition later on you approve and you provide us the information of.
Right. The, there's the something in bylaws for every corporation. The documents at the founding of the corporation extend to the congregation, by the congregation's vote, the ability to purchase and/or dispose of property. And that's part of the original corporate creation. So we are within our rights to sell property.
So you have the minutes of meeting on those approval?
I do.
Yes, please provide to us too, so that we have a record of that, please.
I will supply all those.
I don't have anything else.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Chair Walbert, sorry, if we could formally close the public hearing first before we move on?
That's what we're doing. I'd like to formally close the public hearing now that we've exhausted return questions. At this time, I'd like to go ahead and deliberate if any Commissioners have anything to say or any questions for staff or any follow-up. Now's the time.
I have a question for staff. Is it correct that we are required under state law to accept all of the waivers, incentives, and concessions requested by the applicant?
That is correct.
That really covers my question, honestly, so.
Yeah, and a follow-up question to that is, the number of waivers, according to state law, is unlimited.
That is correct, unlimited.
So as it stands right now, we have one concession that they're asking for, which is the height of the building at 35 feet, but accommodating three-story units. And for clarity, looking at the plan, the 35-foot units are the very low-income affordable units that are above multiple garages, correct? So the living space starts above the garage. That's why it's at three stories?
Yes.
Okay. And then there's a total of, I think it's nine waivers? Or is it eight?
Eight.
Eight, okay.
The last row is the same one as a, yes.
Any other questions?
Just a comment, no question.
Go ahead.
No, I just wanted to, you know, the resident that came and spoke, I just wanted to know that I certainly appreciate that this, you know, it's a big change to what you're used to, and I, you know, I sympathize with you, and I, you know, I guess, in a perfect world, maybe we'd be able to work with the developer and maybe come to some sort of compromise where everyone's happy. The world we live in, we're dictated by the state what we can and can't do. We can't do really much of anything. I've expressed my frustration with that in the past, past meetings, the erosion of local control. I don't think that's a positive thing. But to go to the positive, I think this is a beautiful project, and I wanted to make sure I noted that. And I do want to commend the developer for going above and beyond the required parking. I think that's great. So, you know, it looks like it's going to make a good improvement to the neighborhood. Again, again, I feel bad for the neighboring properties that are going to lose their, you know, their view that they have right now, but I think this is going to be very positive for that area, so just wanted to say that.
I have a question regarding the solar panel. Did you have provision for design with the solar panel for all of the units in the future?
It's required by the building code to provide a solar. That's part of the building code.
I did not see it reflecting in the layout of this.
All residential projects require.
Okay.
It's not just this project. And the draft resolution contains all building or all different departments standards to be met. So that is part of the conditions of approval.
Okay. Thank you.
Do I have any motions on action, take, you know, for action on 8.1?
I'll move to approve.
And I'll second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Power, seconded by Chair Walbert, to adopt a resolution entitled "A Resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Westminster, California, recommending the Mayor and City Council approve case number 2023-0818 pertaining to a development review of affordable housing density bonus and a vesting tentative track map for 25 four-sale residential condominium units, including 23 market rate units and two very low-income units located on parcel one of Lot Line Adjustment LL2023-0804, APN 096-041-30 and -31, previously addressed as 13552 Golden West Street, Westminster, California 92683.
I'll go ahead and call roll. Commissioner Bowie? Commissioner Power?
Yes.
Chair Walbert?
Yes.
Motion carries.
The Commission's action on this item shall become effective 15 days after decision date identified in the notice of decision. The applicant and/or any other interested party may file an appeal of the Commission's action to the City Council. The appeal must be in writing and filed with the City Clerk within the previously mentioned 15-day period.
All right, let's move on to Agenda Item Number Nine, Regular Business. I don't think we have anything correct. All right. Item number 10 is reports, none to be reported. Item number 11, matters from staff.
We have nothing, Mr. Chair.
All right. Item number 12, matters from the Planning Commission, including AB1234, reports when required. Anything from the gentlemen here on the day?
I just had a question, actually, for staff. Is, at this point, do we look like we will have a meeting on July 17?
Mr. Commissioner, no, we do not, we will not have an item on that day.
Okay. Then I guess now is a good time, just let everyone know, this will be my last Planning Commission meeting. I am moving out of the city. It's been a true honor and pleasure to serve with these fine gentlemen up here, to work with the staff, who have been phenomenal. I will miss the city, and it's been a pleasure doing, you know, doing this role as a Planning Commissioner. So, thank you, everyone.
Couple of comments from me. I know this is going to go before the City Council, and I'd like to make myself, and I'm sure any other Commissioners available, when it comes time to the City Council, if we can help staff in any way, let us know regarding this particular item. Also, just want to say, we're going to miss you. It has been awesome having you on this commission, and we wish you, not only from my fellow Commissioners, but from, I can tell from city staff, we wish you the best in your next endeavor as you and your family head out of Westminster. Slowly, just go slow. That's all we're saying. All right. Any other matters? If not, I would like to go ahead and adjourn this meeting, the regularly scheduled meeting on Wednesday, July 17, I think, is going to possibly be canceled. Is that correct? So we'll keep you updated on that, but we'll adjourn tonight's meeting. It is now 7:25. Thank you.
Thank you.